All right. Thanks, Brian, and welcome, everyone, to this February 27, 2023 meeting of the Homewood City Council. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to start with an invocation from our own Counselor Jones, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Let us pray. Mighty and merciful God, thank you for all of the many blessings that you have bestowed upon the city. We thank you for all of our employees. We thank you for the educators within our city and what they mean to our children and to the future of Homewood. We thank you for this council, and may we always work together for the common purpose of Homewood. We thank you for the leadership within the city and pray for the mayor and for JJ and for all of us to do what is right for our constituents. We ask all of this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, Ms. Salter, if you will please call and roll.
Counselor Gualtin?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Everybody's present. We've got a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of February 13, 2023. We would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes that were previously distributed and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. We've got a few of these tonight. First, Ward 1, excuse me, BZA, we have gotten, as I understand it, one applicant from Callan Childs. So I would assume that that would be the appointment that y'all would want to make?
Yes, we would like to make the motion to nominate Callan Childs for Ward 1 BZA.
In a second. All right. We got a motion from Mr. Gualtin, a second from Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. Next, we have Ward 2 Arts Advisory Position. I believe this is an at-large position.
There's one at-large position that we received some information on, but we have Ward, yes, one that's...
The at-large one is the one we've gotten some information on, but not everything.
That's correct.
So we're going to hold on to that one to make sure we get all the information that we're supposed to get, but we're not going to reopen that one. But then the second position is...
Second at-large, and then the Ward 2, the term has expired for Amber Parsons, who will reapply, but it will need to be. She didn't submit her paperwork in time, so we do need to reopen that.
All right. So I will go ahead and reopen those two until March 13 at 4:30?
Yes. You're just opening one position?
Two. The Ward 2 position and an at-large position.
One at-large, okay.
All right. Then we have a Ward 4 HEC position. I believe we have one applicant for that one as well?
We do. It's John Northrup, and we looked at his information, and we're happy to make a motion to appoint John Northrup for that position.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Nelms, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, 11 to zero. We also have an at-large... Nope, sorry. That's the one we've already reopened. Okay. I think we're good, except for, Mr. Mayor, I think you have an appointment for tonight.
That is correct. Sadly, due to some work obligations, Brady Wilson has decided not to reapply for his position on the Planning Commission. We certainly thank him for his service, and there will be a proclamation coming at a date to be announced, but we needed to fill that position because he actually stayed on for another two months until we got this done, or until I got this done, and met with two very good candidates, and I'm happy to appoint Eric Henninger to the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you very much, and congratulations to Mr. Henninger. All right. Excuse me. Next, we have two additions to the agenda tonight. These will... Yeah. Sorry, you're right. Well, so according to what I've got is closing on the 13th.
We have March 13.
March 13. Okay. No problem. Two additions to the agenda tonight, both to other new business. The first is 230223, request for permission to hold event with Soho Social on the Plaza for the Wine 10K Run on March 4, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 9... I'm sorry, 6:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., brought to us by Joseph Longoria of Aspire Sports Institute and J.J. Bischoff. Next item, also to other new business, 240223, request for consideration of an ABC 240 nonprofit special event retail license for the Homewood Chamber of Commerce DBA Taste of Homewood located at 2850 19th Street South, which is downstairs on the Plaza, brought to us by Melody Salter. All right. So with those two additions, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Harden, a second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's approved, 11 to zero, which brings us to the consent agenda. We entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Mr. Gualtin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved, 11 to zero. All right. Before we get to old business agenda, we do have to go, or I would ask that we go into executive session again to discuss potential pending litigation, if someone would be willing to make that motion.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session. For how long do we need?
10 minutes.
Second.
10 minutes.
All right. So we... Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero. Mr. Kendrick, do you need to give us an instruction? Okay. All right. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
Make sure that I handle my job effectively, so five to zero coming out of finance.
All right, another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also approved eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-three twenty-three. Next item seventeen oh one twenty-three, public hearing, excuse me, set for tonight for consideration of condemnation of the dwelling structure at fifteen oh nine Beckham Drive, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. We will start with a report from public safety. Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted four to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so with that, I will go ahead and open this public hearing. Mr. Pugh, I guess I'll let you go first and then I'll take care of this.
Okay, yes, sir. Very briefly, history in about three years ago, well, longer than that, about maybe four, four and a half years ago, I began getting complaints about the maintenance condition of the house. Three years ago, in September of two thousand and twenty, it finally made it to the abatement board, at which time the abatement board voted to simply send out a letter warning the homeowner that improvements would need to be made, or it may face further action. Nothing was done, and then in March two thousand and twenty-one, it went back to the abatement board. At that time, the property owner and her mother attended via Zoom from California, and they stated that the pandemic had prevented them from returning, and that they were going to pay someone to make some repairs, and that they asserted that the house was safe to occupy, and that they promised to return and resolve the matter as soon as the pandemic restrictions were lifted. Fast forward to August two thousand and twenty-two, no improvements had been made. The owner's representative, Ms. Moose, attended the meeting and stated that the owner was ill in California and unable to attend. She stated that the house had not been listed for sale, as it was too sentimental, and she stated that she knew it needed work. They were keeping an eye on it by way of cameras, on which they said they observed a raccoon in the kitchen at one point. The abatement board at that meeting voted unanimously to identify the house as an unsafe structure, and that's where it sits.
Okay. The owner, or at least one of the owner representatives, couldn't be here tonight. She lives in California. She did send a letter, and I told her that I would read it for everyone. So that's what I'll do. "To whom it may concern, my name is Stacy Hecathorne, and when the original owners who purchased the home in nineteen fifty-eight, Aurelia Cox-Ferris, also known as Rita, my grandmother, and Betty Idell-Christman, my great aunt, both passed away. The house was left to me. I moved back to fifteen oh nine Beckham Drive with my mom, Sherry Moose, in two thousand and three to care for my aunt, and also permanently moved back to Homewood. And this time, my mom remarried. I got married, and in two thousand and twelve, my husband, Matthew Richards, and I bought the home, I bought, brought home our daughter Aurelia. From two thousand and three to two thousand and seventeen, my mom and her husband, Ron Moose, and me and my husband continued to make fifteen oh nine Beckham Drive our home, raised my daughter in a multi-generational family home. We worked hard to take care of the house and to do repairs and make the necessary upgrades. To our surprise, starting in two thousand and fourteen, my daughter would constantly point at the TV saying, "I want to be there." As we learned later, she meant she wanted people to see her in the TV. Her dance teachers also encouraged us to bring her to California to meet with some agencies because she had it, had the it factor. My husband, mom, daughter, and I decided to come to LA for three months while my bonus dad, Ron, stayed behind to take care of the house. While those months have now turned into five years, when we decided we were going to make LA a more permanent home, Ron agreed to stay back in Alabama, fly out to visit us every other month or so until we could get everything moved and sell the house. Well, as life often does, our plan didn't go as smoothly as possible. An illness I've been facing got increasingly worse. Ron had a mild heart attack, heart attack, and COVID hit. We've been back twice in the past year and a half, but while we were back in August, my health went from severe to dire, and the time we had planned to spend cleaning out the house had to be canceled, and I had to rush back to my doctors at UCLA. My health is stable but critical, and I will be facing two to three surgeries in the next year, and the doctors are still trying to find out why I'm so critically ill. Please understand, I want to get the house cleaned out and on the market as soon as possible. My husband is coming back within the next month or so to get the ball rolling with the help of our, with the help of some family friends, and Alexander Moore and his wife. We are also in talks with the Moores about a contractual agreement to put the house on the market by September. At this point, we are begging for about six months to get everything done, but hopefully much shorter. Alexander is at the meeting on our behalf, and he can attest to the fact that the outside of the home needs work and the house needs to be cleaned. There aren't any leaks in the house. It is sturdily built into Red Mountain and is overall safe and not at the point of being condemned. Thank you for your time, and hopefully patience and understanding, warmest regards and gratitudes, Stacy Lee Hecathorne, Richards, Matthew Richards, Sherry Moose, and Ron Moose. All right, so with that, I'll ask if there is anyone else here to speak for or against this item?
Thank you. I'm Dan Campanio. My wife and I live at fifteen twenty Beckham Drive. We've been there twenty-six years. We went to the building department, and we obtained photographs of that up there of the fifteen oh nine house. Who shows that there are holes in the roof which allow rainwater to go down in the house. I am a mechanical HVAC engineer, and I know experience that rainwater causes black mold and mildew in such instances, like right up there where you got a water leak. Suzie Cook, which we've been in contact with, she lives at fifteen oh five Beckham Drive, told us that she has to spray for mosquitoes due to the standing water at fifteen oh nine Beckham, and that the drive, that the smell from the house is terrible in the summertime. The owners of fifteen oh nine Beckham Drive have made one promise after another to fix the house and obviously have not done so. We have no confidence that the owner will fix the house, and this driving down the property values of the rest of us on that street. We request the city council to condemn the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If you will just sign in on that sheet while you're up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And my name is Laurie Richardson-Fields, and I live at fifteen oh four Voice Road, which is perpendicular to Beckham, and I have been there for nineteen years this coming June. I have been keeping an eye on that property since two thousand and eighteen, when the horrible incident occurred, and the family moved. And the house has deteriorated every, every year. I walk my dog down that street daily, and every day it gets a little bit worse. I've had, I've posted pictures of what's happening in Homewood, kudzu growing in the cars. Cars have been there since two thousand and eighteen. The tags have not been removed. The cars have not moved. I will say, somebody came around two thousand and twenty-one to quote-unquote clean up inside the house, and what they ended up doing was leaving massive amounts of garbage in front of the house that was rushing into the drain, and I did call the Public Works to come and pick it up, but it was, it was just, it was getting worse. And so my husband and I ended up having to go and retrieve like three large bags of trash left by this family that was supposedly cleaning their house up. So to back up Dan Campanio and Tammy Campanio, the house definitely needs to be condemned. It is bringing down our property value. It's a health hazard. We have children that live in the neighborhood as well, and it is, it's just a dangerous situation. And, and again, we have heard promises from this family continuously, and they have not fulfilled their promises.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Hey, guys. I'm Alexander Moore. I was referenced in the letter, so I have been in talks with the homeowners, attempting to get the house under contract so that I could do the renovation on the property myself. I've walked the property within the past week with my contract partner, trying to see the extent of what we would need to do to get the property in shape to market. The client is wondering whether or not we would market the property for them. We're just going to, we're just trying to get a direct contract with them to purchase the property of ourselves. Condemning the property would, of course, complicate that for me a bit. It's not non-negotiable, but it would complicate things for us. I don't think that the property on the inside, I didn't see any water intrusion that I could see, but that doesn't mean that it was within the walls, you know? And I can see all the photos from there, what it's, what those are showing, so I totally understand from the outside perspective. Of course, on the inside, I didn't see anything. Foundation looks sturdy, but it is going to be a full extensive gut, and I'll probably have to put an entire new roof on that house. It's going to be very expensive, but it could definitely be done. So that's, that's where I'm at, and that's how I have come, come in contact with Miss Stacy in regards to the property. So, of course, that would complicate things for me if the property is condemned, condemned tonight, and of course, it will complicate it for the homeowner as well. So I'm trying to do, do it in a way that's beneficial to them on the other side of the country, and could also get the property renovated as quickly as possible, which is what I would like to do. So, and I think everybody in the neighborhood would like to see that done, too. So, that's where I am.
Yeah, hang on, hang on. Before I forget, will you sign in?
Yes, I will.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Alamon?
Yes, sir. Could you elaborate a little bit as to why condemnation would complicate your plans?
So if I take the property under contract myself, I may do the renovations myself, or I may sell it to another investor to do the renovations for, and if the property is condemned, that may complicate the resale of the property.
Mr. Harden?
Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir.
You know, I live in the world of commercial real estate world, and I tell people, if you don't have a price, you don't really have anything. Do you, have they given you a price of what they'll sell the property for, and have they told you they will sell it to you?
We, we have discussed a price, and they are willing to do that. It's more of the belongings that they have inside the property. Like they said, it's been a multi-generational house for sixty years, and they're on the other side of the country, and we're trying to work out the logistics of storage of the items on the property.
So what agreement do you think you have with them at this point?
I don't have a written.
I'm talking about verbal, not written. Do you have any verbal, here's what we'll sell it to you for?
So we have discussed price, and we have discussed timeline of storage, but I have not gotten a signature from them. I told them I wanted to come see the position of the city tonight before moving forward with them.
Let me make sure I understand. At present, you don't have an agreement with it.
I do not have the house under contract at this moment, as I speak to you now.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Let me make sure I heard you correctly. So you have not been inside?
I was, like, this past week I was inside the house.
And you don't believe, so there's no black mold?
I did not see the presence of black mold. I mean, I have pictures on my phone of the inside. I didn't see black mold. I mean, it is very dirty. It's obviously been unoccupied for several years, and is overflowing with a lot of things, but I did not see or smell the presence of mold there. But I mean, you know, I did, I wasn't tearing into the walls, you know? Who knows what I'm going to find when we start tearing into the walls?
Okay, because I thought that was in our initial report.
There's, there's, there's holes in the, in the soffit and in the roof line.
There's the, the potential to, there's clearly water intrusion somewhere because there's holes in the roof.
Correct.
And that can lead to black mold. I think the point is whether or not you see it on the, see it from an inspection at this point versus once you tear the sheetrock out, might, might be different.
Right.
But Mr. Pugh, you tell me if I'm missing something.
That's correct. Yeah, I wouldn't presume to say there was black mold, even if I saw something that looked like black mold, without a proper mold test. So I just, I wouldn't say that, but it's, it's very likely. Conditions are good.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of follow-up questions.
Yes, sir.
First of all, you said you did reference a timeline with them. Could you describe that and related?
The timeline that they requested was, you know, six months. For me, that's a little long, but it could be faster than, you know, the process of condemning it and potentially tearing it down. So it's just what, what you guys would find acceptable as far as the timeline. That's the timeline that they brought to me. I could, you know, I could close this house in thirty days and, and, you know, have it under construction sooner than that, you know?
Because, I mean, obviously, leading up to this point, you know, this has been years in process. By the time it gets to this point, basically, there's condemnation, there's still a time period where substantial progress can be made.
Right.
And, and, you know, that can be extended, but, I mean, basically, we've already been on a timeline.
Right.
With the city of dealing with this for a while, so.
Right.
It's tough not having something concrete like an agreement at this point, because all we're getting is more promises, which the city's had over, over the past year, so.
I did attempt to get a signature before this.
The homeowner, but also the neighbors primarily.
Under, understood, and I did attempt to get a signature. I knew that that would have been a much stronger case to bring before it, but again, promises, and I was not able to, to do that with them, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Well, we're still talking to him, correct?
Correct.
So, once we close the public hearing.
Yeah, okay. Any, any more questions for Mr. Moore?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Pugh as well, if, has the city been able to enter the property to check the interior condition of the home?
No, not the inside. No, we've not been given access.
So based on what you've seen from the outside, do you believe it's a danger?
Yes, sir.
Animal control was in the house a couple of years ago to remove, the smell is the result of animals living in the house, breeding in the house, defecating in the house. They went in and removed a number of cats, I believe, or possibly dogs. I don't remember exactly what it was, but we've been in the house with police to remedy the issue. It's, and it was, the description that was returned from our officers was that it was one of the most disgusting environments they'd ever been in.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Moore? All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing. Mr. Waltney, did you?
I did. Thank, thank you, Mr. Moore, for providing the feedback, and the neighbors for coming and sharing their stories. I've heard about this house for probably the first year that I was on council. It was brought up to me as a, as a problem, and then it's been a continual issue, getting it through the abatement board, getting it here to discuss, and there have been, in full transparency, the owner did ask, email us and ask that we speak on their behalf, which I don't feel like that I can do in good faith to the neighbors. But the house has been such an issue that we've had animal control in there multiple times, cleaning out issues. We obviously have a public nuisance issue where it's open. We could have mold and other, there's plants growing in the yard. It's an eyesore, and all of the neighbors that I've talked to, either campaigning or just getting phone calls, they're all just at their wits' end about what can be done. None of us would want to live next to that, and they shouldn't have to live next to it either, so.
Ms. Gier?
Yes, I would, I would just like to add that we're definitely sympathetic to the situation with the family. But, you know, I was in the meeting in two thousand and twenty and in two thousand and twenty-one, and there were a lot of dates and timelines and promises made that have passed. Neighbors are try, direct neighbors are trying to sell their house and have received negative comments, interest in the house, but want to know what's going to happen to the house next door. And so for that reason, I feel obligated to move things forward for the neighborhood.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll just reiterate a little bit what Mr. Sims said, which is, as, as we consider this, you know, my thoughts are, it's thirty days before the city could even do anything, and, and so, and certainly could be longer, but it's thirty days before the city even could touch it. By contrast, if this is denied, we got to start the entire process over. And so, you know, I, I think for me, this would, you know, moving forward with this condemnation, and hopefully, Mr. Moore is able to work with the homeowner, and, and they're able to work something out, and I would encourage you to continue to do so, because as Ms. Gier said, I think, I think we, you know, certainly have sympathy for everyone's condition, but at, at some point, this, we, we do have to do what's right for the public, and this house clearly, in my opinion at least, is a danger. And so we do need to move forward and don't need to start this process over and be back here in a few years again. So with that, if no one's got any other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'm assuming that's a motion for approval?
Motion for approval, yes, sir.
To condemn the property?
Yes.
All right, motion for Mr. Waltney, second from Ms. Gier. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Wolverton?
Just going to say, obviously, to your point, it will be a matter of time before the city can do something. Mr. Moore, I don't believe has been here before, so I was, I understood, he, he wanted to move forward quickly, and just for your knowledge, this might actually help you move forward more quickly with it potentially. So just, just so you know that, you know, until the city does some active, you know, demolition on the home, there's, there won't be a lien against the property, so.
That's, that's all right. There's, there's already.
Well, there's a lien for yard stuff, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah.
But there won't be for this, for this part.
But, yeah, we, there's a thirty-day period that.
Before we do anything.
Before we do anything.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-three twenty-four. Next item, oh-five oh-two twenty-three, request for discussion of changes to traffic calming installation on Morris Boulevard, brought to us by Counselor Sims. And we'll start with another report from public safety. Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met on the twentieth and voted four to zero to recommend rescinding resolution twenty-two dash fifty-seven and leaving ordinance twenty-eight thirty-three in committee for further discussion. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Harden.
All right, so we have a motion from public safety. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Kendrick, just to make sure, do we need a resolution?
Yes, sir, there is a resolution.
Okay, so that will be resolution twenty-three twenty-five. All right. Next item, oh-six oh-two twenty-three, request for consideration to work in the right-of-way along Central Avenue adjacent to seventeen twenty-two twenty-eighth Avenue South, brought to us by Corey Varden of Reeves Construction and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes. Sorry. Committee, no, that's wrong. It says Public Safety Committee, but it was Public Works Committee. Voted four to zero to approve the motion by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. All right, so we have a motion from Public Works. Mr. Sims, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I just wanted to note that that motion also included, since Cale wasn't there, just, I wanted the opportunity to hear from Cale about any concerns related to traffic, given the length of time that that, that right-of-way would be closed, and that's, so basically, I just want a report from Cale and Paul.
Sure.
So Randy went out and did a traffic study last week on the report, and so Birmingham Water was out there doing construction and was relocating traffic down that alley, so we took out the time that they were doing that. And what we landed on were, the study lasted four days, and we had approximately two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty vehicles in those, in those four days.
Over the course?
Yeah, so you can consider sixty cars per day, sixty vehicles per day.
That's just down Central.
Down the, down that alley, next to the creek, that's correct.
They finished off the east of the way out.
That's right. They've already.
You have no cars on that.
Right, you're right, they've already blocked that. So this is just along Central. That's correct. So sixty vehicles.
In between the two oranges.
It's along Griffin Creek.
It's sixty cars a day going back there?
Because really, it's not, I mean, would you call that a road? I mean, it's not striped, and it's not.
They're just going to express old chain.
Right, exactly. And they're cutting through from, you know.
And they're, they're cutting through.
Yes.
That's right.
So we have an easement, the roads between those buildings.
Correct.
We required the owner, Mr. Moran, to give us, as a condition of vacating the drug park.
Along twenty-seventh Terrace.
Correct, twenty-seventh Terrace.
So to Mr. Kendrick's point as well, we, we, we talked about this project closing Central while they do their portion, and then there would be another bank project, I guess, with another developer, that could potentially also close Central when they do their work. Ideally, that timing would be overlapping to where, you know, they could get that work done, and Central would be closed for less of a duration. However, if that's not able to be coordinated, since obviously this is not part of these gentleman's project currently, possibly the easement would be opened up by the time that the other project occurs, so that there would at least be that traffic flow. Does that make sense? Do y'all, that if, if the easement is opened up, so I guess I ask of our, you know, the representatives of this project, is that easement parallel to the bank site planned to be open by the time you complete your project on Central?
So the easement y'all are talking about, is that twenty-seventh Terrace?
Yes.
Okay. No, because that portion is going to be part of a shared parking lot with the bank. The terrace is going to be a parking lot? It is. Yeah, they can't do that. Yep, Chris Reeves.
Yeah, it has.
Chris Reeves?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, it, I want to make sure we understand what you're saying. The right-of-way is still going to exist, but it's going to have parking on both sides of the right-of-way?
That's right.
Okay, but the, it's still going to be open, the easement is still going to be open for traffic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It just won't be open until the banks finish with construction, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
From what we know, the bank is supposed to be starting construction in April, and their timeline will be much quicker than ours. Our construction schedule right now is carrying us through the end of the year, so we are under the impression, again, different architect, different developer, because Mr. Moran sold that portion of the property to some, to the bank. So they should be starting in April, and most likely, we would be finishing around the same time.
I don't know that we heard that at committee last week, but that's actually more promising because it all could get done at the same time, and as far as the work in the right-of-way, they just need to come back to us separately.
Right. All right, any other questions or comments? Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Has anyone communicated with Express Old Chain so that they can communicate with their customers? I just don't want them to be angry that their customers are not going to be able to access.
We, you know, we've mobilized out there. We've been in talks with Home of Music and the Dance Foundation. Nobody from Express Old has said anything to us since being out there. I actually talked to my superintendent tonight before we came over here, but we're happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean.
Because we want to be a good neighbor. I know this is, it's a pain.
Yeah, I mean, just so they can direct their customers to go the correct way.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that.
I have one other point. The way that we have drafted this indemnification agreement, which has been formally required on the owner of the property, because to be quite honest, we have contractors coming and going to get through the logic recommended to Cale and to Wyatt, going forward, these, these applications need to be in the name of the owner of the property, because that's really the only portion upon which you can enforce the provision. So this is drafted to be signed indemnification by the owner of the property.
Okay.
And follow up to that, if the owner of the property signs it, then won't that also handle the bank's project as well, then?
He sold that land.
Oh, he sold it, I'm sorry.
So, so, yeah, he'll have to sign a separate one for the next one. Or, or, the owners of the bank will have to sign it, because they, they own that property now.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Did you sign it, sir?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-three twenty-six. Next item, oh-seven oh-two twenty-three, request for consideration to work in the right-of-way adjacent to five oh five Windsor Drive, brought to us by Ben Strout and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with another report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton?
Yes, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approval of a dumpster and a porta potty for six months pending indemnification, proper indemnification agreement. This motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Gier, and we made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Gier. And we did look at some pictures of the property. And the reason this is a little bit different than some others is that the depth of the city right-of-way is very close to the, the house. And then, the driveway, which would be the only other real option, has some topography issues. So.
Okay. All right. We have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0 as well and will be Resolution 2327. Next item, 190123, public hearing held on February 13, 2023 at 6:00 PM for consideration of a sign variance at 169 State Farm Parkway, brought to us by Megan Ellis of Advanced Sign and Wyatt Pugh. This item, we had the public hearing at our last meeting. That public hearing was closed at that meeting, and we carried the item over. For tonight, we were all looking for information regarding additional signs that were not part of the request but are on the property for McAllisters. And I think that Mr. Pugh has that information for us.
Ms. Ellis apologized for not being able to be here. I believe she had another council elsewhere. But she sent over some additional information, and I've sent that, yeah, Brian has that there. It's, it's more of a detail of all of the signs. And as you scroll on down, Brian, you'll see that there are some pictures, there we go, from the site. The location, in fact, of the monument sign you were all asking about, which is the dual monument, visible from Lake Shore, from the Lake Shore side. The, the front of the business, what you would think of as the front, is visible from the Lake Shore side as well.
Yeah, I went out and looked, and the monument sign is in the corner of the property right on Lake Shore.
Yeah.
And, and Wyatt, we discussed last, in the committee meeting and in the public hearing also, we discussed that there were some signs that were allowed that were not part of the variance request, directional signs that had already been approved. Can you tell us a little bit about those?
That's right. And those are not shown on her, her plan there, but there are some small free, little, their own little poles, but they're called, they're called direct berry signs. And they're little, small, like four square foot signs that say pickup window this way, parking this way for McAllisters, that type of thing. And there, there are several of those about the property.
But more than two?
More than two.
I think she's, I think she said three or four.
I think there may be three or four.
Yeah.
I thought that's what she said.
Which, they, they don't require a permit.
Right, yeah. Those are just allowed.
As long as they're small.
Right.
There's a lot of directional signs for that, for that property.
And, and Wyatt, I'm sorry, I'm going to be the one that's going to ask a bunch of questions. But the, you sent us the revamped, what that is. But I, from, in my, when I pulled it up on my computer, it just was kind of jumbled, and I couldn't tell.
Okay.
I thought they had reduced some of their ask, but it doesn't look like they have reduced any of their ask.
No.
Have they reduced the size? Like, we talked about the pickup sign being smaller.
Still the same.
Okay.
So, just to recap, go through the variances we're talking about. I know we're talking about numbers.
Right. So, it's a numbers variance. Variance 1 would be to permit a second wall sign on the side of the building, which is the, on the bottom left. So, the bottom center, that's the, that's, that's the lake, that's your view from Lake Shore. But the side elevation below that is going around the right side of the building. That also includes that pickup sign, which is too large to be considered a directional sign. And I believe she also said it was illuminated, yeah, it says it right there, illuminated side elevation above pickup window. So, that's an illuminated wall sign. So, that's the second variance.
For size or for?
No, it's just-
For number.
The size, well-
Because of the size, you needed, it requires, it's, it's another sign, so you got a numbers variance.
Thank you.
Wyatt, if you don't mind, another question real quick. So, you're talking about that bottom-left picture now, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you're driving down that road, like you're going toward where the Taco Bell is now, is that the, that's the part of the building that you see first, correct? Because really, the front you don't see, that's facing Lake Shore. So, you're driving around, and that's-
If you're on State Farm, you mean?
He changed the pictures for us. If, could you go, could you go back to where you-
No, the, the, the front that you see there in the center, that's facing Lake Shore.
Oh. But I'm talking about the one below that, though, the bottom left.
That's facing the Taco Bell.
Okay. So, if you're driving around, that's what you're going to see when you first come, coming from, you know, Lake Shore, when you enter-
No, that's, it's the other side.
That's the other side? Okay.
Yep. No, you'd see that if you were coming from one of the hotels-
Okay.
Down Lake Shore, I mean, down State Farm Parkway.
Basically, changed the orientation of that building. Most of the buildings along through there are facing State Farm.
That's right.
In this case, it's facing, they've changed it to face Lake Shore.
Right. But I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, because, you know, you don't-
That's correct.
But, because really, you, you-
Yes.
I, I did go look, too, just to try to get a frame of reference. And you do need some signage to see what the, in my opinion.
You don't need that much.
And, and can I comment that she still has not removed the sweet tea? I started, I looked at theirs, the only thing she took off was the sweet tea, and it's still there.
No, it, it, I, I, the ask is exactly the same as it was when she came before.
And, and, and then I would also like to make, I would like to ask that when, this is the second time this particular sales rep has done this, when they come forward, they need to present what all of the signage is, because this is the second time that we've had to go back and look and see and collect with all the other signage, was where she didn't have the full picture of what was at the property.
Oh, really?
And changed, right, and changed the direction that we were going to go in in the first place.
That, that may be partially my fault.
I, 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 we, I think we all told her pretty directly the last time she was here that we needed a full picture. And then, and then we all sat up here and said it to her again, and we still don't have all the directional signs, you know. We've all gone out and looked at ourselves now, but she has not come forward with a complete picture.
Yeah.
And so, I would ask, in my mind, that's, that's misleading. And-
Well, I will say, and I, because I don't want her to get a, a bad rap when she, she did send me an entire sign package. And so, what I did was I reviewed it, and I put together the exhibit to show what the variances would be.
Okay.
So, it, it may, that may be my fault. So, I'm sorry.
Well, and, you know, and I will say, and I know she's not here, and I'm not going to beat up on Megan because I, I like Megan. And she's just doing her job that she's supposed to do for her client. But, you know, we all mentioned that if that pickup sign was smaller, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even require a variance. That would have been an easy thing to fix. I mean, if they're going to have an illuminated sign above the pickup window, they could have just made it a little smaller, and then it wouldn't have required a variance. We made some suggestions for things that might, could have helped this not be so complicated because that is a whole lot of unnecessary signage. I mean, I don't think you need a sign on the side of the building that's facing the Taco Bell. I mean, no one's coming from that direction, except maybe people staying in the hotel. Maybe. A few people come in there.
They can see the monument sign.
And they can see the monument sign. Exactly.
I think the only thing she changed was the font on the signage.
I'm sorry.
Hang on.
Yeah.
Will you finish giving the list?
Yes.
The list is so long.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I directed the very long list of variances.
Right. So, um-
We're on number three.
So, let's see. We've got, we've got the, the bottom left, which is one sign, one wall sign. We've got that, that center one that says pickup, that's a wall sign. The one above that, on the rear elevation at the top, that's a wall sign. And the pickup, it's not too late to add sweet tea, that's a wall sign. So, you're looking at four, four variances.
All right. I'm going to go back over these.
Variance for four wall signs.
I'm going to go back over these, make sure we're all on the same page.
And, and, yes, so, look up at the top, rear.
Yeah. Variance 1 is the side McAllisters Deli sign. It's at the bottom-left corner.
Which faces?
Which faces Taco Bell.
Correct.
We're talking about the one in the, in the center or?
No, at the bottom.
Oh, at the bottom. Correct, correct.
That's, that's one.
That's one. Thank you.
Number 2 is the pickup sign on the side of the building.
That's number 2.
Above the pickup window.
Correct.
Number 3 is the rear sign, the rear McAllisters Deli sign.
Correct.
And then, the fourth is the pickup sign with the arrow that's on the back of the building.
That's correct.
All right. Okay.
With the advertisement for sweet tea. That is an advertisement.
Sure. That includes an advertisement for sweet tea. Mr. Sims, do you have a?
I was just going to say that, given what we've done already in this area with other places, that I could see the appropriateness of, you know, possibly one additional wall sign. But that's really it. And the State Farm side makes the most sense, looking at it, which I think is variance 3. I think the rest is a little superfluous.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I, I would agree. And if, if, in the future, I think what would really help me is, you know, I'm a visual person and a high-level person, like, just an overhead view of the property and where each sign, the requests are. I mean, it's just taken me a while to, to visualize all this. But, but I agree with Mr. Sims that, you know, we, we want visibility to the property, but that, that's a little overkill as to what's being requested. Like, a before and after would help me.
Sure. Well done.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I mean, I think, and also, we have to take into consideration that there is already a monument sign out with their logo on it. And there is also four other signs coming from the State Farm side that point you to where the pickup window is, point you to where your parking lot is, point you to where the front door is. I mean, there's a lot of signage already that doesn't even require a variance. So, I'm with Nick. I think as long as you have your sign facing Lake Shore, so that you're catching that crowd, and you're catching people on the backside with your sign on the State Farm side, I don't understand why you need more other signs than that. And certainly not one selling sweet tea.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the variance requested for the McAllister sign on the back of the building on the State Farm Parkway side. And-
That's variance number 3.
Variance number 3.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I would approve, I would move to approve variance number 3 only.
All right. Yeah. So, we have a motion for Ms. Smith, a second for Mr. Sims. Mr. Jones?
The only, the, the only thing that I was a little concerned was that the monument sign is small. I was driving by the other night, I couldn't see it very effectively at night. So, the, the one facing Lake Shore is where I felt like-
But that's not a variance. That's, that's, they get that sign.
They get that one. They get one wall sign. Okay. So, they're getting that already. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's their, that's their main sign.
Yeah. So, what they will, if this is approved, what they will end up with is the sign on the front, the sign on the back, the monument sign, and all the little directional signs.
Clear, clear that.
And if, and if they decided to shrink down that pickup window sign that they have on the side, they could do that, and they wouldn't have to ask for anything.
Absolutely.
Correct. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So, we have 10 to 1, and that will be Resolution-
Is that me dressed?
It is. Resolution 2328.
I'm mad about that sweet tea.
I didn't mean to signal you out, just to make sure I have the workers.
You know the sweet tea's not on there, right? Just, just to make sure we're all-
I do, I do.
I'm only, I'm not saying that to try to change your vote. I'm just saying that to make sure we all understand. The sweet tea sign is not approved. Okay.
I was trying to be funny. Sorry.
We just approved the one sign on number, on-
On the side.
Request number 3.
I mean, on the rear, excuse me. Yes. All right. Next item, 090223, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variance, variances at 201 Green Springs Highway, brought to us by Mo Alatum of Beauty Trends and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Committee met last week, voted 5 to 0 to further this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right. So, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Pugh, I see you, but I see you alone.
Yes. Mr. Alatum apologized, as he said he didn't have anyone else to run the store tonight. So, he was not going to be able to be here.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Pugh, will you just tell us what the item is?
Yes, sir. It's roughly eight wall signs, I'm sorry, window signs, or maybe even nine. I think it's eight. Window signs that exceed 50% coverage. In fact, they cover 100%.
So, this is similar to what we considered with Ace Hardware and even to a lesser extent with the theater last meeting, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
50%.
Correct. And, in that area, 50% is left. Yes. Yes, sir.
I will also add that, just for the record, that I received a couple of, a couple of calls from people in the police department with concerns about multiple buildings with window coverings in this area, that they, there were some issues, and they felt like it was hard for them to, you know, safely do their jobs with such.
And I think we've got another one coming up, our next, I think we've got a public hearing, our next meeting about, the next, the next one up. So, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wolverton?
Hey, Brian, are you able to put up one or both of those pictures I sent you? It, it's not exactly directly related to the signage itself, but we have talked to this property owner about the lighting issue as well, around all of the signs, all of the windows effectively. Brian, do you have those?
I'm, I'm getting it. I just saw that you sent it. Hang on.
I got you. But I, I know-
What do you make of lights? They have neon lights.
Yeah, string lights around it. Super bright fluorescent all around every single sign and the entire perimeter of the building. And the property owner's been talked to about this several years ago, and it's still there.
I, I assume that's against the ordinance, Ms. Pugh.
Yes, sir. It is.
Okay. We, I don't know where we stand-
That's from Friday night, by the way.
Yeah. I, I don't know where we stand with Mr. Cook's conversation, but will you follow up on that for us?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So, then, with regard to this request for a variance, any other questions or comments? Does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Harden, second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
All right. Sorry, they, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let's start over.
Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. All in, the, the motion was made in the positive, so it's for approval of the variance. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So, that fails 0 to 11.
0 to 11.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Next, we have our committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion, a second for approval of that agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 11 to 0, which brings us to other new business. 190223, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at 126 Barber Court, brought to us by Jeff Belk of Mayfield Dairy and Wyatt Pugh. We will set that hearing for our next meeting on March 13 at 6:00 PM. Next item, 200223, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a sign variance at 254 Green Springs Highway, brought to us by Ally Nasher of Shell and Wyatt Pugh. We will also set that public hearing for March 13 at 6:00 PM. Next item, 210223, request for consideration for budget amendment for emergency repairs to the Public Works Building due to busted water lines, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Service Director. This is an item that I think we all heard about that relates to water lines that were busted during the cold. There is, Mr. Jones, do you remember the number, I know, 120? $120,000 that's coming back from, that will eventually come back from the insurance company?
It's going to be in the insurance fund.
But it's going to be in the insurance fund. Okay. All right. Any questions or comments about that?
There is a budget amendment.
Okay.
It'll just be, the budget amendment will be, will be the, both in the insurance fund, proceeds from the insurance fund, and then also built a property damage street department because we need to have the money in there to do the purchase orders before we get the money from the insurance.
Okay. Mr. Jones, did I hear a motion?
A second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Jones, second for Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0.
I think that's 29.
Is-
2329.
Twenty-three, twenty-nine.
Thank you, twenty-three, twenty-nine. All right, next item, twenty-two, oh-two, twenty-three, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of February fourteen, twenty-twenty-three, through February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three, brought to us by Robert Gett and Melody Salter. Mr. Alamon?
Happy to say that we reviewed the vouchers, and to our satisfaction, any questions have been answered dutifully, so I'd like to approve them, thank you. Make a motion.
Second.
You have a motion from Mr. Alamon, a second from Mr. Waltney, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, eleven to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three, thirty. Next item, twenty-three, oh-two, twenty-three, request for permission to hold event at Soho Social on Plaza, on the Plaza for the Wine Ten K Run on March four, twenty-twenty-three, from, I'm gonna get the times right this time, five A.M. to ten A.M., brought to us by Joseph Longoria at Aspire Sports Institute and J.J. Bischoff.
So it's not six to nine-thirty?
It's not six to nine-thirty, they want time to set up and break down, so.
So it's five to ten?
Five to ten.
This is actually to the Alabama Sports Foundation, D.B.A. Aspire Sports Institute.
Is that the correct entity? Mr. Longoria, if you'll just come on up and sign in. So, correct me if I'm wrong with what I'm about to say, this is a run that's going to end at the Plaza, and so they are going to rent the Plaza. Y'all have insurance for the event already, that meet the city's requirements, and you are, I understand that Soho Social is a sponsor, and they are either going to serve from their property or get a special events permit?
Correct.
Okay, because you understand if they serve on the Plaza, they've gotta have a special events permit? Okay, all right. Sure, right, A.B.C. board, yeah, so.
Yeah, they will serve from their facility.
From their facility, okay. All right.
And they're the only ones doing it, they're doing.
They're the only alcohol that's gonna be there.
And food.
And food. The food they can do where, that's fine, they just wanna make sure they're not serving the alcohol beyond their boundary, so.
So they could serve food in the Plaza?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a problem. But during the rental time, yeah, that's fine.
I did wanna say, I'm thrilled that the Wine Ten K is back in Homewood, so I'm so glad that this event is back here in Homewood. We lost out to Hoover for a couple of years, but it's gonna be a big fun event, big festive, a great cause, and just a really exciting event. And Joey puts on an event like nobody else, he's got wonderful ideas, and just, you're gonna hear about it on social media for days, because everybody just has the best time, so I'm really glad you guys are back in Homewood.
Thank you. It was that COVID deal, we didn't do it because we wanted to.
Well, okay, yeah, 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 exactly, well, yes, that's absolutely a motion to approve, absolutely.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Andrus, a second from Ms. Smith, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved, eleven to zero, and will be resolution twenty-three, thirty-one. All right, next item, last item, twenty-four, oh-two, twenty-three, request for consideration for an A.B.C. twenty forty, I'm sorry, two forty, nonprofit special event retail license for Homewood Chamber of Commerce, D.B.A. Taste of Homewood located at twenty-eight fifty Nineteenth Street South, which is also the Plaza, brought to us by Melody Salter. As I, remember this, this actually does not require police and fire to do anything, because it's a special events permit, but we need to give our opinion on whether or not we have an objection, so I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, motion to have no objection?
Yes, to have no objection.
Okay, motion for Ms. Smith, I missed the second, I apologize. Mr. Waltney? Second for Mr. Waltney, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero to us having no objection, which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight, and announcements, Mr. Mayor?
Just a few tonight. Don't forget the Exceptional Foundation Chili Cookoff is this weekend, out at the Macy's property, the parking lot at Brookwood Mall. Speaking of the Exceptional Foundation, Robbie and I are working on the basketball game, the annual basketball game that should be coming up in March, so I'll let you guys know as soon as we've nailed that down, but let's let him get through Chili Cookoff before he puts anything.
Well, he's busy right now?
Well, yeah, just a little bit.
You just let him know we've been practicing, okay? We're ready for him.
I don't know who you think's been practicing. And then the Taste of Homewood is on March sixteenth, and then the Homewood Athletic Foundation Cornhole Tournament is on the nineteenth, so just everybody get out there and start spending time.
Mr. Hartney? Thank you very much, Mr. Waltney?
I do not believe that I need to set public safety. Well, we have the one item we kept in there, but it doesn't sound like that we need to discuss this coming week, or do we, for Morris? That's up to y'all.
We did have a resident meeting today, I mean, we're not ready, we can report back from that meeting. Would be all we can do, I don't know that there's action to be taken.
Okay, we'll hold off then, and we can collect the report the next time we meet.
So you're not setting?
No, I'm not setting public safety, and I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gere.
Yes, hey, I just wanted to show everybody the new Mecca sidewalk, if Brian has a picture of that. So there, it's a big extensive sidewalk.
Yay.
A lot of engineering, and it's just phase one that's complete, or mostly complete. There are a few water, you know, kind of water, directional water issues, I think, that are still, Kale is still working on. But y'all, Kale has answered, I can't tell you how many questions, and been on that road, and it's because of him taking the time to talk to the neighbors that they, they're all generally pretty happy with this, with the design and the way it's working. So you can see it's not a straight sidewalk, but, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't an easy engineering feat, and I think they narrowed the road a couple of feet, and I think that helped. And anyway, everybody's very happy with it. We'll be doing phase two, which is the green, the green spaces and fixing the yards will be coming up. But I just wanted y'all to see that, there are a couple of little kids already riding their scooters on the sidewalk, and there was no place to do that, really, safely in the street. So thanks for, thanks for the funding, and, yeah, just wanted you to see that, so thanks a lot, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Alamon.
Yes, I'm excited about the Exceptional Foundation Chili Cookoff. Hika will be competing for the first time, so come stop by our stand, that'd be fun. Also wanna thank everyone for their support for the library and their budget amendment. I think it's important that we continue to support our library, and excited about having a Ward Two representative on the planning commission, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, I think we have one new item that I remember from.
You have several, several of them are mine.
Well, I was gonna say, there's one in particular that stands out, so regardless, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and have Public Works. Potentially an update on one that's been there for several months, so. We'll set that after finance. And, yes, I also wanted to echo the sentiment that we appreciate Ward Two representative being back on the planning commission. We did have a, a meeting a couple weeks ago that we had to dart off to about some potentially exciting, you know, improvements in the neighborhood, and so had a lot of feedback from neighbors, some concerns, some things that, you know, I think definitely are worth mentioning, and so just looking forward to hearing, hearing more back from, from those folks that came out, and any of those that were not able to attend as well, so. With that, I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sims?
I just wanted to add to the list of things forthcoming. Friday, March tenth, is the Homewood Grown Event, which is always another great one annually to attend. Also, the Beautification Board is hosting their quarterly Business Beautification Award Ceremony at Norris on March twenty-second at noon. Also, Beautification Board is hosting a creek cleanup along Griffin on April the eighth, and also a street cleanup on April the twenty-second, so on Earth Day. So a lot of good stuff coming up soon, so just wanted to let them right now.
What was the date, April eighth, and what?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
And that's it for me, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones?
Finance at five, and I'll mention something to Ms. Gere, that, you know, initially I didn't think that sidewalks would work on Mecca, but they look great, and I will correct you on one thing, you said everyone is happy. I've never put a sidewalk in where everyone was happy.
Did I really say that?
Why did you take out my front yard? So anyway, we do, that's all we do, is a balance, I think you use that word today, it's a balance. So I'm glad we all worked together for finishing that, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith?
Setting special issues to follow Public Works, and nothing else for me tonight.
All right, sorry, Ms. Nelms?
Not a word tonight, I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Andrus?
The only thing I was gonna say is that Counselor Nelms and Dr. Ann Dominic and I got to hang out a little bit with Representative Terry Sewell last week at Birmingham Southern, and we were able to thank her for the work she's done for Homewood, tell her we're looking forward to her town hall meeting that they're looking for mid-March-ish, but we're gonna wait to hear from them on what her schedule is. And when she lets us know, we'll be at the senior sitter, and thanks to J.J. for working with Jose to get that set up, when that is ready to go, we'll make sure everybody knows about it, but that's all I have, not setting P and D, so.
All right, Mr. Harden?
Couple of things, one, I'm very always grateful for our representatives. I called Monday, they brought our garbage to the curb, but they forgot to come get it, and so I thought maybe Tuesday they would do it, and Wednesday morning, early Wednesday morning, I called them, and I don't know who did it, but by the time I got home Wednesday, it was gone. So I appreciate them, I don't tell them who I am or anything like that, I just tell them I'm at four-oh-six Windsor Drive. But I am, you know, my wife does work at Birmingham Southern, but, but I think Daniel Coleman is an amazing person who's gonna do amazing things, given the chance, and that Birmingham Southern's gonna be a very special place if, if we can talk our state legislatures into helping them, and I understand all the reasons not to, but if you met that guy and realized the brains behind him and the vision he has for Birmingham Southern, you would, you would jump on board for him. But anyway, so I'm hopeful they're gonna do that, I still have some letters to write.
All right, thank you very much, I don't have anything tonight, so we will adjourn this meeting and see everyone in a couple weeks.